Welcome to the 2022 Maui County Candidate Interviews. Today, we have Daniel Smith, who's running for the county council seat for Haiku and Makawau. Daniel, welcome. Nice to have you with us.
Aloha, everybody.
But Daniel, you have a huge undertaking that you're about to step into in terms of campaigning. And then if elected, it's a big responsibility being on the county council. Could you just give our viewers a little bit of your background, your civic engagement, your experience that feels you so that you're confident in moving forward with this effort right now?
Very good. I'll begin with a bit of a disclaimer to all of our viewers that I myself have been a member of the Maui Pono Network since 2018 when I first joined. And I was looking for an opportunity to get involved in legislation. And the platform that I created that I discovered with the Maui Pono Network was something that I was very impressed with. And so being involved in the Maui Pono Network for all this time, it's good to see you all and it's good to be sitting on this side of the curtain or this side of the video. My engagement started in, well, about 2018 legislatively, where intensively focused, we went through processes like this with the interviews and with discovering issues within the community, looking for potential solutions and creating networks and communicating with different community leaders about how we can move forward together as a community. In this experience, it's given me a lot of insights, a lot of awareness. I've been in, I've been present for many conversations and many committee and council meetings within our Maui County here. So I've developed quite an understanding of the issues as well as the solutions. And my political involvement really began, well, I guess my interest really began back in 2010 when I had left the military. And I realized that we were living in a world that had many issues within our cities, our counties, our states, the nation, the world. So what was it that was going to be able to create a suitable home for our families? In that inquiry, I found legislation is one of the pillars of an entire county, of an entire community. And I decided to dive headfirst in all of it. And it has taken me to some many interesting places. I've opened up my heart to community leaders and have been there for community stances in the past. Anything from the committee meetings to Mauna Kea during the Hawaiian stands to Oahu. I've got a taste of a lot of the government that goes on here, state and county. So I do have, I do have a great experience behind me when it came to the military and all of the lessons that I've learned in that. In fact, I see very similar of how the county operates in almost this enlisted non-commissioned officer kind of position, where it's boots on the ground, it's the county taking care of the immediate needs. And then you have the state, which is very similar to the officers in the military, where they hold this upper umbrella to give support to the rest. And I'm really excited to see that there can be some communication between the two. And I guess I'll leave it at that if there's.
Well, Daniel, I'd like to just do a follow-up. You mentioned about Mauna Kea. And boy, that's a very cold and desolate place and your involvement there. What did you actually do there as being part of that whole movement?
Mauna Kea was a great awakening to my awareness. I pretty much, from Maui, I gave up all my assets to friends and I took what savings that I had up to Mauna Kea to support me throughout six months of my time up there. I was there for the arrests. I was there throughout all of the tensions between the police actions, all of the midnight, 2:00 AM drills that would wake us up out of our sleep to go stand on the line. During my time there, I, well, I've been a community producer of sorts for usually behind a camera, recording events, circumstances, meetings, from county to committees to the Mouna to actions. Up there, I was a bit of an investigative journalist. I covered every bit of that mountain to see where the back entrances were. I spoke with all of the leaders to understand the logistics. I got to really immerse myself in the entirety of that movement and to meet the leaders, to meet just every heart that came up there in support of something sacred. And there's, turns out, as you start to do the research into it, there's an entire can of worms, which made it very possible to challenge such a development and put us, and in fact, put a halt to it. And those can of worms issues is everything from the road that we were standing on being a state structure and illegal state structure on Hawaiian homelands, right, for one, to, you know, all of the management mishaps with the 13 telescopes that were up there already. They're left up there like trashcans, even though they're not being used, they're still there, right? And then even to Hawaiian sovereignty. I've met very many leaders who have a lot of research and a lot of ongoing court things. So I learned a lot. And one of the biggest things is community and how supported everyone was.
Thank you, Daniel, for that. Our next interview will be Alan Lloyd.
Aloha, Daniel. Thanks for coming up and volunteering, willing to run. My first question is, and there'll be a follow-up question, is what do you think the minimum wage should be this year in 2022?
Honestly, as a worker myself, I can get by on 20. 25 is very livable. And it should have happened last year, it should have happened the year before. And it still surprises me that we have a $10.10 minimum wage. It's absolutely an issue.
Okay. And then the follow-up question is, if you're elected to county council, how would you work to increase the minimum wage on Maui?
So as I began to learn more about the minimum wage issue, I understand that there's some state decisions that have to be made there. I would love to see more integration between the county and the state. And I've heard it said before that the county and the state are like these silos. And within them, there's not, you know, very much happening between the two. There's a lot of frustrations that we in the county want stuff to happen, but the state is sort of in the way of that. Also, there's very big corporations, which are, as I became aware, somewhat taking advantage of this social aspect, social welfare system. You know, for it to be okay that a big corporation pays somebody $10 an hour and then allows that person to lean on social welfare systems to pay them the rest, well, that is a burden for one on our economy when these big corporations can in fact pay their workers a livable wage. And it's okay that the wealth distribution, you know, is a bit more evened and leveled out. So, you know, communicating with state people in order to see how we can get this pushed through, like immediately. And, you know, we can have the conversation that it's going to take to face, you know, whatever price changes, you know, I mean, and it really shouldn't even cause price changes to begin with. You know, they don't have to raise their prices on goods in order to pay their people, right? When in fact, like, you know, CEOs are making like off the charts, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's like, well, let's figure out how things can be fair here.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Anne Kathleen.
Aloha, Daniel. Thank you for your commitment and running. So this is about, I want to address water rights. We have problems with water quality. Do we have enough water and droughts? But this is about water rights. And do you support the, I mean, we have, in Maui, the ownership of water really is private between Mahipono and Alexander and Baldwin, which are corporations, offshore corporations, actually international scope. But I know there's been attempts to buy both Waileku Water Company and also EMI. How do you feel about the future of our water rights? What is your position on that?
You know, it's interesting the way that the control of water has developed in the world these days. We're not the only ones here on the earth that are having this issue. In fact, as I understand the issue, the springs themselves are under public trust. But it's the ditch diversions, which are controlled by certain corporations. And this has caused an unfair, an unfair cost when certain farms or corporations will pay bottom dollar and yet farmers will pay, you know, top dollar. The water itself ought to be under public trust and it ought to be fair. It is essential to life. And that means whatever it takes for us to obtain the water source once more and to repair the water source, right? It's been a conversation for a long time now, how the ditch diversions are dumping millions of gallons a day. Certain farmers are being cut off from water downstream where they used to have, now they don't. And certain stream diversions were supposed to open up, but have they? You know, farmers need water, the streams and the whole ecology of the ocean requires that brackish runoff. And, you know, when we have corporations, which are trying to maintain water control for the sake of future development, it's taking away from the land and it's taking away from the people. And, you know, that's a systemic issue that we need to face of putting the water back into the hands of public trust. Yes, I support it.
Great. All right. Thank you.
Great. Bruce Douglas next.
Aloha, Daniel. One of the top issues in people's minds in Maui right now is the affordable housing issue. Rentals as well as purchases have gone sky high, unaffordable and influx of out-of-state money buying up everything, renting everything. If you were elected, what would be your solution to the affordable housing issue in Maui County?
So wow, affordable housing is a big issue. In fact, one of the biggest that actually we have on this island. One of the big things that I've noticed, gosh, there can be a lot of solutions here, right? I've enjoyed looking to certain nonprofits and groups throughout this county who actually have been paying attention to this issue for decades. You know, the Maui Island Plan was supposed to develop a certain amount of thousands of homes by, you know, 2025 or something. And that number is grossly not reached, right? I've spoken with big developers before and they told me that affordable housing is not profitable enough for the developers because of the cost of shipping materials, that the desire for the developers is to build the multimillion-dollar mansions because it makes money. I mean, who, right? But, you know, I think Mike Molina had said that he had tried to push some legislation through, which would increase the minimum affordable housing units of like, say, a development from 50% to perhaps a bit more. How can we get a bit more than 50% from these developers? But then it was said that, you know, the mayor's office, Victorino, had tabled that and put it aside. And what the developer, the big developer had told me was that there was legislation put forward to actually bring that 50% down to 25 because they were looking to keep their profits afloat. Now, being the systemic issue that it is, we have to look at all manner of what's happening with the affordable housing, anywhere from the timeshares to the Airbnbs, you know, all these hotels and, well, really, these situations that are taking housing away from locals. Lanai is facing the situation, right, where, you know, and Gabe Johnson, Bravo, you know, he's definitely done some amazing work. He's passed those couple of bills, Bill 111 and what was the other one, like 60 or something like that? So I would say that amongst all of the conversation of affordable housing, that there are solutions present. And me getting into office, I would definitely support a lot of the initiatives that Gabe Johnson has put forward as well as the others and to see how we can create perhaps the moratoriums on timeshares, right? The moratoriums on the development to really see how we can get housing sustainable, especially in these times. We need sustainability.
Thank you very much. I'll pass it to Paul.
We'll have Asia Iyer next.
Oh, Asia.
Hi, Daniel. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thanks, Asia.
So on the county council, where do you see yourself? Which committees would you like to be a major part of? Or what committee would you like to lead if given the opportunity?
So I know that currently, Mike Molina, who holds the council seat of Haiku, he's in the Government Relation Ethics and Transparency Committee, which I know is a big committee. There's a lot of responsibility there. I do hold a lot of interest in that committee for the sake of my history within the military and seeing what good leadership is capable of and also seeing what bad leadership is capable of. And we have had issues in the past with administrators and committee heads and, you know, troubles with, you know, corporation councils and, right? When we have seen certain leaders be removed from their positions or, you know, certain ethics challenges, you know, brought forward, which might keep someone from taking a seat that they shouldn't. So this ethics and transparency is very big on my heart, although I know it is a big learning curve for that position. Another seat that I am interested in is the human concerns in parks. Human concerns, you know, it's something that I have a lot of experience with, I guess, here on the island. I myself was living out of my vehicle for like three years here, right? Rent was too much for me and some buddies, so we got a car and we hit the road and learned how hard it really was for people to live here. And, you know, just some of the things that I've seen happen in this human concerns in parks committee in the past is somewhat troublesome to me when certain bills and legislation come forward, which are unconstitutional, that try to make it to where you can't like give support to homeless people without getting permission from some kind of county group. You know, it's just not right. And all the sweeps that have been happening, it's like, you know, there's a lot of assistance that can be given to the houseless, you know. And the houseless aren't to be like looked down upon as trouble to society. In fact, most houseless are, it's really a sovereign choice. And it's a freedom that, when done properly, is very sustainable. And of course, it would be nice to have some assistance in that regard. So ultimately, if I can get into the human concerns in parks committee, I think a lot of my skills and all of my knowledge within the law and certain legislation there and, you know, what's possible to give assistance, I think that'd be a good fit.
Thanks. Kind of a follow-up question. What do you, I guess, how do you feel like your past has prepared you to be a council member? Not in the way that you, that a lot of us see the council members, which is just in the, you know, chair doing legislation. But as you know, having spent a lot of time working with the county and working with council members, it has a lot to do with just management of a team, right? So what do you think has happened in your past that has helped prepare you to be a good manager of your team, who hopefully help you research and help you make good decisions and to really be representative of your constituents?
You know, I am very excited for the team. I know, I understand that there's staff and I am very much looking forward to having a good staff to be in support of this. My, all of my experience in the military has given me the ability to work with a team and to lead. I was in certain programs in the military, which made it to where I was trained as a non-commissioned officer, which gave me certain responsibilities and statues to, you know, give commands and to lead tactfully with teamwork. Evolving out of that, you know, even being involved with the Maui Pono Network, we bring in volunteers and we create teams to do many things. You know, it takes teamwork, it takes listening to all manners of point of view, you know, even from the lowest in the tier to the highest, because there's wisdom all around. So I know that to be a great leader, it takes being a great follower as well. So that the integration of like intelligent action can be seen, can be formed, right? So I have a lot of experience in training, actually. One of my big things in the military was training. I was assistant to the training NCO. So I would keep records and write orders and make sure that people got to training. You know, they would train me to train others before deployments. So I have a lot of experience in that, which I think has a great ability for myself to be in a position of like this, you know, billion-dollar corporation that is this county, right? It's like I'm able to work with everybody, right? And that's really what's necessary, especially to dissolve conflicts. Like, let's all work together in this because we're here on an island and we need to make sure that we do good by one another.
Thank you. Go ahead, Paul.
Daniel, I have the next question. And certainly, one thing the pandemic has shown us is that we need to diversify. You know, to have our dependence upon the economy that we've had for so long, since the 70s, really, with tourism, what do you propose to help with that diversification and really have it so that residents can afford living here also?
Big topic, diversification of the economy, right? Right now, tourism has become the major pillar of our economy. Plantation, that whole plantation form has really dissolved in the face of visitors coming in. Now, we've really seen the effects of what happens when the planes stop coming in, when the ships stop coming in. The entire economy is obviously not very sustainable, right? We learn this. Diversification of the economy is such an important thing right now, right? We have anything from the challenge of these lockdowns to wars going on in faraway places. And in fact, most of our tax dollars actually being sent to these faraway places. The economy itself, the dollar, the US dollar, doesn't look so good. You can see the projections of all the economists and, you know, without sugarcoating it, the US dollar is in some trouble. So what we need right now for a diverse economy is to bring forth jobs that are going to bring, bring it back to the house, you know? Bring it to where we have jobs that are going to create food, that are going to create, you know, the technological advancements, the medical advancements. You know, it's an issue when families need to either be flown to Oahu to have their children. You know, meanwhile, midwives are under attack, right? And they offer such an amazing service. We need to be able to support ourselves. And that means when hard times come upon, that we can support ourselves. This whole dependence on shipping is a problem. And shipping itself has very many problems with the Jones Act and that's been, right, under attention for a long time. A lot of our economic benefit is being just sucked away by having to bring ships to other harbors before they come here. So we have some diversification like issues that we need to face. So how can, and that needs to happen immediately. So, you know, getting into office, that's one of my major focuses.
What type of legislation, Daniel, would you want to pass so that we can have that diversification? Because certainly, you mentioned a lot of different things from technology to food sustainability. What other areas and how could that be actually integrated within our community?
So I'd like to take an example from the country of Hawaii, from the kingdom of the Hawaiian Islands, right? Eolani Palace was very good. They had power before the White House did, right? I want to look to see how we can integrate all of the blessings that the entire world has as far as education. We can educate our people, right? So when it comes to, so when it comes to really bridging this gap, we have to look at what legislation there currently is that allows offshore interests to come in and to own big plots of businesses, right? There'll be huge shopping centers that are owned by someone who's not even on this island. And the rents, the high rents of those businesses makes it really difficult for people to operate amongst that. So we have to look to see how we can be, of course, international as well as local, right? That whole thing, like act local, think global. So we need to see how we can integrate more education so that we can have more opportunity here.
Okay. Well, certainly, that's a great step. Anne, you have the next question?
So this is back to about water and waste. And that is, we have a lot of cesspools here, which is one form of aging infrastructure and they're a violation of the Safe Drinking Water Act in EPA, federal rules and regulations dating back to 2010. So what do you think is the solution? What can we do to improve this form of aging infrastructure?
Now, I was involved in a job once where we came in and this guy had a really big backhoe. He was digging holes and I was helping push the wheelbarrow to lay the. He was digging holes and I was helping push the, push the wheelbarrow to lay the rocks. And they were creating, um, they were creating these, not cesspools, but you know, the underground tanks that are like, the septic tanks, right? To really like hold everything like very nice and tightly. Um, that, that, the, the issue had come up about all of this, like, you know, over, overflowing and flooding. And someone had mentioned, and I'd like to look more into it. Um, if there's some kind of grants that are given to homes in order to like upgrade their systems in their homes. Yeah, I'd like to look more into that issue because this whole runoff situation, which is getting into the oceans, I mean, like you could, you could just smell it running sometimes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's, that's like an immediate thing that, that, that people can perhaps have some, have some help with. So what kind of, what kind of grants or where, where can monies come from to assist people to assist homes to upgrade their systems? Because I mean, it costs, it costs a bit in order to upgrade a system like that. Um, and you know, especially in these times, how do we get, how do we get people some help in that? I'd like to find that out.
It's very expensive, right? To convert from, um, cesspool to septic tank.
Right.
Definitely a form of pollution. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
And, and, and just on that too, it's another note of sustainability, right? Because if, if your roof's leaking or if your sewage is leaking, right? Like you're not going to change the furniture. It's like, we gotta, we, we gotta, we gotta fix the leak here. So let's see how we can, let's see how we can do that.
Great. Alan Lloyd will be next.
Aloha, Dan. And also, uh, you had mentioned, um, commercial rents and, uh, some people not being able to afford those. And for many, commercial rents are either their top expense for small businesses or their second expense. And, uh, residential rents are also increasing. Uh, a room, a room in a house is now $1,300. A one bedroom could easily be 15, 16, 17. A two bedroom could be easily 2,000. Uh, so what's your thoughts about both commercial and residential rent control?
Yeah, I think it, I think it all kind of has to go back again to wealth distribution. You know, we have, we have a situation where Maui is one of the most prime places on earth, right? People want to come here. They want to vacation. They want to see all the beauty. They want a place to stay. Um, and these, these offshore interests, you know, who might buy out these, these businesses and then lease them to business owners at a, at a, at a high rate, right? Um, all that, all that money is just, you know, to them, it's all, it's all numbers. And I would, I would, I would really hope that these owners would be in their hearts to see that there's, there's much beauty to having a local business, even though a franchise might be very profitable, you know, and like a franchise like, you know, like McDonald's or something can well afford any, 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 any price, right? But we have, we have actual local business owners who are looking to make their way in the passion that they have to offer. And that ought to be, that ought to be affordable and sustainable again, right? The, the whole, and, and I guess this, this goes back to creating the diversified economy is giving assistance to those local business owners, you know, maybe in the beginning to, uh, may, maybe put a cap possibly, or if that's a constitutional issue, then, um, you know, we, we have, we have programs for, for first time homeowner, homeowners. Maybe there can be a program for first time business owners or something to get, to help get them off the ground and get, get people in the door. Yeah. Did, did, did that answer the question?
Uh, that was for commercial rent control. What about for residential, for renters? Uh, how would you, how would you keep, how would you, um, uh, many people pose rent control as a way to limit the increase of rents each year. They say rents can go up by 10% and then that's it each year. What would you, so what do you think about rent control for renters?
You know, I remember something that, that, that Gabe Johnson had mentioned where, like, you know, Lanai as well as the others, right? But let's look at Lanai. They have so many homes that are available for locals. And, you know, Mr. Mr. Ellison has big projects that he wants to, that he wants to build, but he doesn't have the workers. So he calls in the workers, they move in and the workers are taking over the houses because they're able to, to purchase on a, on a higher bid for the house than someone, than someone who's local. And so they, they, they get pushed out. This is, this is a situation that's happening across the nation right now where local homes are being just swatted, like, it's almost like investors come in and they just swat the whole thing so that they can, so they can then work some kind of real estate business, right? So this whole thing has become a very profitable business. And these real estate markets are trying to like, you know, get their, get their top dollar for it. Meanwhile, residents and locals are having to either move off island or work three, four jobs, you know, my, like myself. I've, I've worked three jobs to, to get by. So I know how it feels, you know, so caps, you know, where you can only like raise the cap so much, that's, sounds like, sounds like a viable, sounds like a viable solution. Um, I do, I do like that the, that the recent bill that Gabe passed, which made it, um, to where the list of options for people to buy a home, right? It's like, well, how long have you lived here, right? That's, that, that's now a consideration. Someone who's lived here longer is going to have more consideration than someone who just moved here, right? And it's like, well, these are, these are things we have to look at because there's only so much resource here. So, yeah, it, caps are great. Um, and more, more affordable housing being built, right? We gotta, we gotta, we gotta develop responsibly and develop sustainably for, for, for what's to come.
Great. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Uh, next we'll go to Bruce Douglas.
Hey, Daniel. So what would, the real sign of a real legislator isn't just sitting back and what you, what you vote on, but what you champion when you're in the legislature. What bills and ordinances you work on, you develop and you bring to fruition. Uh, if elected, what would be your three favorite projects? That you would want to champion and see these changes from Maui County?
Three top, um, if I were to pick three top, which is for me, I, I have, I have my eyes on like so many things. So it's hard for me to sort of choose what my top might be, but let's see, um, I would, I would put a lot of my attention toward food sustainability, right? We have to be able to feed ourselves here. Um, I feel with food comes, comes, comes water. So we can, we can, we can lump those together, right? Food and water. Sustainable, diverse, diversified agriculture, support for small farmers. The second is, well, something, something near, dear to my heart, uh, houseless. Right? How can we, how can we get them some assistance? Because I'll tell you, it's, uh, it's quite nervous, nervous of if you get a knock on the window with a flashlight by a police officer in the middle of the night. Um, you know, some people, some people need a bit more help to see if they can get their vehicle registered or get their vehicle safetyed or like, you know, people, people need some support, some, some help. And, uh, there's a lot of, a lot of good people out there doing the work, you know, which is why I think myself and human concerns and parks committee, I think would be, would be a great fit, you know, otherwise, uh, you know, put me in the great committee and we'll keep transparency and ethics good. Um, the third one, the third one that I really want to focus on is something I'm still doing a bit of research on. Um, there's a lot of counties across the nation right now which have their focus on creating legislation to establish protections of human rights and the right for, the right for the medical freedom of choice. Okay, um, the issue, one of the, one of the big issues that has come up in the past, which a large number of, of educated, uh, people of Maui County have gone unheard by a lot of these leaders is the issue of informed consent. Informed consent basically is a tenet of medical ethics addressing human experimentation enshrined in the Nuremberg Code after World War II. Mandates under these circumstances violates not just federal law, but also international laws, civil and individual rights and public policy. And legal actions have been filed nationwide regarding this matter. I would love to see more conversation around this because it is both a local, state, national and international issue of human rights concern. You know, you can't, you can't coerce or incentivize people to take an experimental product, even for the sake of, of safety. You can't do it. Right? And that's what, that's what they found out from the Nazi trials, right? So we got to pay attention to history here repeating itself. So that is, that is another one of my, one of my top priorities.
Great. Thank you for those.
Uh, Asia Iyer will be next. Asia, are you there? Yes.
Hi. So I'm, I'm kind of scrambling for a minute because Bruce, uh, kind of took my question there about the wet legislation you could see coming forward. Um, okay, this is, this might be a little obscure. So just give me a second to, to form my thoughts, but there's, you've talked a lot about, uh, helping the, helping the homeless, helping with, uh, uh, minimum wage and with, with housing equity and things like that. I, I see a large hole in the county for just improving the quality of life of residents, period. Whether it's improving the roads, the access to, um, you know, natural parks and access to nature in general and, uh, you know, improving our parks and recreation opportunities for kids. What have you thought about that? I know that you've, you've looked at this as you've worked with the homeless because they kind of deal with the brunt of it. But there's also just, you know, a large percentage of the population in Maui that's not really enjoying the quality of life that they could. So how, how do you see that you could address those needs, uh, from a county council standpoint?
Yeah, very good. There's a lot of, there's a lot of basic things that, from roads to, um, uh, you know, a man called me the other day and he said, oh, you're running for office. I want to tell you about, about this, uh, these funds that are, that are accessible, right? So there's, it's just amazing how, how many, how many options there are that we can face, right? Um, there's a certain road that goes from the Haiku marketplace to Paul Weylow. And it's a historic road. It's one of the, it's like one of the first, one of the first roads that was made, um, originally back when. It doesn't have sidewalks. It's kind of sketchy to walk on. There's children that need to walk to the bus stop and there's, you know, and, and there, there's an issue for these children not really having a sidewalk to walk on. And there are funds that are available. Apparently there's federal funds that'll give um, money for historic preservation. And that road, in fact, is a historic road. Um, let's see how we can get any funding that's available to us to put it to those basic needs. Um, and a big part of this is seeing where our money is being, is being pulled into other directions that perhaps it doesn't need to be, right? Like taking a large, oh, well, golly, just look at Oahu with that rail, with that rail machine that's billions of dollars over budget, right? That's, that's, now that's a really big example. There's very small examples, which we can see also where money goes to like put, put, um, but air conditioning units in schools and then it never happens, but the money goes somewhere. Where does it go? How can we, how can we, you know, put the, put the stops of the leak in our bucket? And so that we can have more to give to sustainable life here, right? Um, the management of parks, you know, could very well be operated with, with, um, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? To like, not only to preserve, but, uh, but to further, right? To, to, to create more planting, to create more.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Um, reforestation projects, right? Because where there's, where there's trees, there's water, right? And that's what, what we can see ecologically is when you, when you chop down all the rainforests, it becomes a desert and desertification is a thing. The trees are an antenna for the rain. So how can we create more of that? You know, people come here to, to Hawaii and they want to see Hawaii. But what do they see? They see thousands of acres of empty plots, which are, you know, you know, it could be maybe some trees planted, you know, and, uh, you know, plant some trees in between Kahului and Kihei there, you know, like make it, make it beautiful. You know, we, we can, we can do things to beautify the land, to make things, um, more accessible. Roads are very important. I'm still, I'm still real curious myself to see if we can get a road that goes from upcountry down to Wailea or Kihei or something. Because golly, if you have to go all the way down to Kahului to make your way back to, you know, just to go to the beach or something. Um, yeah, I think it's very important that we, that we, uh, and, and again, it goes back to sustainability, right? I mean, if you're going to spend all that gas to go down to Kihei from upcountry, you gotta go the distance. Like, let's make it more sustainable for us. Just figure out how we can get a road over there. Figure it out. I'm sure we can figure it out.
So I, uh, kind of along those lines, if you were just talking to an everyday worker, someone, let's, let's say, not saying that these people are every day, but there's, there's some, there are people who just get up every day, go to work, come home, enjoy their families. They have great weekends. What would they see different living on Maui if you were a council member? What, what difference would you make in their lives?
Well, you know, something that I focused on when it comes to a society that functions at its best, right? It's been a big inquiry in mind because I want to create a world that is good for our families and children. I would love, I would love for the people of Maui to see, or maybe even feel underlying. Maybe they don't see it, but maybe they feel it, you know, maybe they, maybe they notice that, that perhaps, um, that the state highways would no longer have all the spraying and the poison that it does, right? The county decided that we were going to have the pesticide bill and end the spraying countywide. But yet the state, which owns so much of the roads here, is spraying like mad people. I'm telling you, if you, if you take the, if you take the drive to Hana, you'd see just all of the dead matter above all the waterways and streams. And I see people standing in it to take pictures. And I'm just thinking like, okay, there's, there's some unawareness going on here. You know, things can be more beautiful. There, there could even be more jobs, you know? I would love to see, I would love to see jobs for, 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 for the people of Maui and sustainable ones.
Yeah.
And, and, and a diversified economy at that. Um, I would love for there to be the raise in the minimum wage, like immediately. You know, $10 is, is, uh, is unacceptable. It's just, it's just not possible to, what, you're just gonna create, you're, you're gonna create long-term workers, but workers want to, you know, we want to be able to work and then earn enough so we can go home to our families and play with our children or our nieces and nephews. Um, I'd like to see these things.
Thank you. Go ahead, Paul.
Uh, Daniel, uh, we've covered an awful lot of ground. Uh, and so I, I was wondering if there's anything that you wanted to talk about that we have not breached at this time, or if there's a final statement that you'd like to make?
Yeah, um, you know, again, I guess I touched on it a little bit earlier when I, I spoke about legislation of informed consent. Um, I would love to see this more as a, as a topic of conversation within our county and within our state. It is a very key issue amongst all of, of course, the infrastructural, uh, things that we need to focus on. The issue of mandates is a, is a very key issue that must be looked at because it affects us. because it affects us in our daily lives. You know, it has closed businesses in this in in the past by by force mandating people to be vaccinated or lose your job, um, by not allowing uh by not allowing customers to come in to certain establishments. Um, businesses have taken an enormous hit. And a lot of these, again, a lot of these uh international business owners who own who own the buildings that the that the that the locals are leasing from, that, you know, a lot of times they're they don't want to let up. It's like, oh, pandemic or not, you need to pay your bills, right? And it's like, well, Jesus, like, um, so this this whole issue of mandates um is 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 a is a nationwide as well as global issue. And I I would love to see more focus on it because because um, you know, we're talking about we're talking about the freedom of humanity here and the 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 entire function of government is to protect rights and to protect private property, period. So, um, you know, it my heart is very much a champion of the Constitution. I swore an oath as a as a military soldier to uphold the Constitution against enemies, foreign and domestic. And I would love to see that the Constitution is remembered and that children are unmasked in the schools because they're they're such a low risk anyways by 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 all the data. You know, they don't need to be forced vaccinated, they don't need to be wearing masks. And we don't need to be like brainwashing the children by telling them their constitutional rights and at the same token, giving them giving them detention because they're not wearing their mask or something, you know? Um, there's a large, there's a large population of mothers and teachers and everyone else who are who is who would love to see more um more support in this. And I have seen that our legislators have been lacking in responding to this crisis. So I would love to um, I would love to be a part of that conversation. And again, welcome all of the experts and doctors and and great authorities to give their discourses on this issue and see how we can maintain protection of 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 property and rights.
Thank you, Daniel. Thank you so much for this interview and for taking this time. And but those who are watching, uh, everyone in the entire county votes for all of the different districts for county council. So you all have a chance to vote uh for county council. Daniel Smith, who's running for the Haiku Makawal Paia seat. Aloha.
Aloha.